Can we do six thirty?
It is six thirty, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, and notice our new bodyguards. All right, Chief, you're up.
All right. Mayor and members of the council staff, I appreciate the opportunity to take a few minutes here to recognize the great work of our officers. We've kind of flooded the council chambers the last few meetings here with the swearing in and tonight's awards. Got a little bit of a backlog because of COVID. We were not meeting in person or whatever, so some of these recognitions go over the course of maybe the last six months or so. But we did want to recognize the officers for some of the life-saving actions that they've demonstrated over the past several months. So I'm going to try to keep this brief. I want to be respectful of the time. But maybe as I, and what I have here is I've got several letters of recognition, some of which will lead to a letter of commendation, which I'll explain what that is here in a little bit. But maybe what I'll do, just in the case of, as I go through these individually, if the officer could just step forward, so maybe the audience knows who they are. But this first one is to Officer Brent Vandal and Officer David Callis. On September nineteenth, at approximately twenty zero two hours, Officers Vandal and Callis responded to a medical in which the male was not responsive and had difficulty, no respirations. Upon arrival, officers found the victim had no pulse. Officer Vandal and Callis initiated CPR, utilized their AEDs, delivered a shock to the victim. After some time, the victim regained a pulse and was subsequently transported to the St. Cloud Hospital. Actions taken by Officer Abel, or excuse me, Officer Vandal and Callis resulted in the saving of the victim. The actions of these officers reflect greatly upon themselves and the Way Park Police Department. The victim, we invited the wife of the victim. He was not able to be here, some COVID concerns. The wife did want to come, but again, decided best to stay home. But I heard some very nice things from them and very complimentary towards the actions of the officers. So just that recognition. If you, maybe if you could just, again, any sense of time, maybe hold applause until we get all of these done. The next one is, this is for Officer Andrew Lemkeel. This is a, we have a word called a Stark Pin, and I'll explain what that is here in a minute. On June sixteenth, at 2021, at approximately zero six, zero nine hours, Officer Lemkeel was dispatched to a medical at 224 Third Street South. Officer Lemkeel was advised that a female was in labor and that contractions were very close together. Mayo ambulance arrived on scene and got the patient in their ambulance and began transport, began transport. Mayo ambulance staff asked Officer Lemkeel to follow in case they needed to stop to deliver the baby. Ambulance did stop, and Officer Lemkeel helped deliver a baby girl. Officer Lemkeel is to be commended for his actions on June sixteenth, 2021, in performing professionally in assisting delivery of this baby girl. These next few, I think, really speak to not only the actions of our officers, but the opioid epidemic that we're seeing really across the country. And over the past year, during COVID, we kind of revamped our recognition and award program. And for the initial life-saving involving the deployment of Narcan, we are giving our officers a life-saving award. And again, I'll just briefly summarize a couple of these. This next one, Officer Josh Brown, Officer David Callis, and Officer Alex Zaboy. You'd step forward. This is on September twenty-second, twelve thirty-nine hours. These officers were dispatched to a medical. The male was unconscious. They initiated CPR, they administered Narcan, and they essentially brought the victim back to life. So these officers are to be commended for their actions. Similarly, Officer Abel and Officer Hannah DeShepper. On July fourth, at approximately twenty-one fifty-two hours, Officer Abel and Officer DeShepper dispatched to an unknown male, call. Dispatch advised to call that someone was dying in the parking lot. Upon arrival, officers located the victim, found he was unresponsive, delivered Narcan, and the victim, again, regained consciousness. Great job. The very next day, Officer Lemkeel and Officer Egert responded to a very similar situation, possible overdose. Upon arrival, officers located a male victim who was unconscious, was not responsive, delivered Narcan, and brought the victim back to life. Officer Callis and Officer Voight, Officer Voight is no longer with us, but we want to recognize him as well. On May eleventh, at zero two fifty-two hours, Officers Voight and Callis dispatched to an overdose, three-eleven Park Meadows Drive. Twenty-four, twenty-year-old female was unresponsive, not breathing. Victim was in the, not, again, not breathing, did not have a pulse. They initiated CPR, Narcan was administered, and the victim, again, regained consciousness shortly thereafter. And one more, Officer Jesse Abel and Officer Jeff Egert. Hope I didn't, did I read this one again? Are you guys just up again?
No, I'm sorry.
There's another one? They're just that good. April thirtieth, Officer Abel and Officer Egert dispatched to a medical. The victim was not breathing. Again, they did CPR. Victim did not have a pulse, and again, Narcan was deployed, and the victim did regain consciousness. And then just a, just a couple more things. Like I shared, we have recently revamped our awards and recognition program for the police department. We have a valor pin that we have issued a couple times before. Brad Thielen and Todd Weirs were recipients of that. We have a commendation medal that has been issued to officers in the past for going above and beyond. And in our, in the process of reviewing our situations and cases, there was one that was sadly missed. This goes back to, I better get my glasses on for this one. This one goes back to August of 2018. But Sergeant, um, where is it? Sergeant, he was an officer then, he's a sergeant now, that's where I look. Sergeant Solber and Officer Lemkeel responded to a, he was, came in as a intoxicated person, arrived in the hallway. They were not being told that, well, they were told not to hurt or to kill the male who was yelling. They heard a lot of screaming and banging on the wall. The male, the male refused to open the door. They did draw their tasers, and wasn't long after that that there was an attempt to, to open the door or break the door. Suddenly, the door opened up. The male lunged at Officer Solber with a broken glass bottle. Probably, in our training, could have very well been a deadly force situation with that kind of weapon. If he had been slashed with that, it could have caused death to the officers or great bodily harm. That did not happen. They did deploy their tasers and took the suspect into custody. They, in the result of the lunging, the victim did, or the suspect, did cut his arm quite significantly. That required the officers to apply combat gauze and a tourniquet to stop the bleeding. So in one minute, they're defending themselves, and the very next minute, they're giving first aid and did not have to use a deadly force in maybe a situation where it might have been justified. So these officers are to be commended for their actions and be receiving a commendation medal for those actions. Congratulations, guys. And then one last recognition I'd like to share. This, this, this is for Officer Lemkeel, Officer Abel, and Officer Egert. This last year has been very intense field training. We have trained ten officers over the last year, and these officers have been the primary FTOs through that process. And this is just simply a letter of recognition, a recognition for the work that they have put in to train up these new officers. I don't think they have ridden alone in a squad car for a long time, but their work as FTOs, I think, is one of the most important jobs in a police department, teaching a new officer the skills to be successful in this job, and they do it extremely well. So I'd like to recognize these FTOs, and we have several new ones that have agreed to step up to do the work of a field training officer. So congratulations, guys. And so, round of applause for. And again, under very stressful situations, life and death decisions they make every day, they respond extremely well, and we're very appreciative of the work that you all do. Thank you for coming in tonight. Special welcome to any family that are here. I know there are a few of them, so with that, you're excused. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Is there anyone here for public input? Anyone, public input? All right, review and approve council agenda.
Move to approve second.
Further discussion, own favorite?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously, and the only agenda item today is the Southwest Beltway Study.
Perfect. Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Adam Sina with the consultant team working on the Southwest Beltline Corridor Study. So tonight, if you want to go to the next slide here, I'm just going to, I'm here to provide a brief overview of where the study's at. I know we had a council work session earlier this summer where we talked a little bit about the study, got some input. Here, I'm just going to provide you an update tonight about where we're at, what we've heard thus far through a couple rounds of engagement in a couple different venues. We'll talk a little bit about our, the alternatives that we've developed and the technical evaluation, then we'll close things out with kind of where, where we're headed here to close things out through the end of the year. So, next steps, next slide, please. Overall study goal, just a quick, real quick refresher, is, you know, the goals and the purpose of this is really just to identify an alignment for, for the Southwest Beltline Corridor, evaluate those different alignments, and really set the policies to preserve that alignment. As we know, there's a lot of development, and that's going to be encroaching in that area over the, over the years, and it's good planning practice to identify that corridor so city staff and, and others and county staff can make educated decisions when, when development proposals come in to preserve the necessary right-of-way for, for that future corridor. So next slide, please. The Beltline Corridor for the entire St. Cloud region is nothing new. It's been, been in the planning documents for many years, and again, it was reaffirmed at the last Metropolitan Transportation Plan Update recently that there is a significant benefit to having the Beltway Corridor around, around the region. In particular, the Southwest Beltline, you know, there's going to be a lot of benefit to the fifteen, Highway fifteen, Highway twenty-three, and seventy-five corridors in particular. And so there is a significant benefit to having this corridor. Is it needed tomorrow? Not necessarily, but it's something that you want to plan for because, because these types of facilities do take time to implement overall. So next slide, please. Touch a little bit about schedule, where we're at. We started back in April through the first phase, really, which was really that purpose and need and issue identification. The second phase, which we kind of worked through here in the summer, really focused in on the alternatives and the evaluation for that, and included another round of engagement. And then our last phase here, which will be closing out through the end of the year, will be really focused on that adoption and preservation policy, as well as some, some funding strategies and identification. Next slide. From a public input, that first round of public engagement happened earlier this summer. We had about two hundred and fifty responses, so that was, we had an online interactive map survey where we collected data from a wide swath of, of the region. Next slide. What we found really is that there was strong support for mobility for the corridor, as opposed to just providing access and residential, having residential homes had direct access. It would be served more of a mobility function. The majority of the respondents actually said they'd like to see it happen as soon as possible. And then there was a question about prioritization, about which segment would be, would be, would like, would the public like to see prioritized, and that was that segment between Highway fifteen and twenty-three. Other feedback that we heard really was environmental impacts are important. We really want to avoid those at all costs. Pedestrian amenities and having a safe facility is very important, whether that be a raised median and, or features like that to help make sure that it's as safe as possible. There's, there's consensus that it would provide some, some benefit to the, to the region from a congestion relief perspective. And then finally, that really it's important to kind of keep the costs down, so utilize existing alignments as much as you can, kind of implement it as kind of a piecemeal type of approach as opposed to one major project that might take a much more significant investment. Next slide. We also met with a focus group, and so what we did is, is we brought in some of the large tract property owners in the area, some of the business owners and development community. And, and so we wanted to really kind of hone in on is, is really focusing on the alignments during that discussion, making tweaks, refinements based on their feedback and input and knowledge of, of the area. During those discussions, you know, there, obviously, there's a concern about property values, losing a right-of-way or having to donate right-of-way and being compensated for that. That was a key discussion, so we walked through that a lot during that first focus group meeting. We made a lot of alignment modifications and tweaks to the preliminary alignments that were made as based on those discussions or, or added alignments based on that. And then we, they talked to, again, they kind of reiterated the environmental impacts during construction and kind of minimizing those as best they can as well. So, moving forward to the next slide, so where were we from the alignment perspective? I don't know how many of you are still around in kind of that 2008 timeframe when the original planning study had kind of kicked back up, but really, we started with those alignments that were developed back then. We, we looked at what are those new conflicts that have come online since that time, and really came up with the alignments that you're seeing, seeing here in the, in the 2021 alignments. You have those base alignments in, in half your map that are, one side of your map that you have in front of you as well. We went ahead and refined those based on both input from the, the focus groups as well as, as the, our project management team with members from MINDOT and the county, as well as Way Park, St. Joe's, and St. Cloud. We presented this information at the focus group, made some tweaks, as I had mentioned, and really, we're really kind of focusing on, on, on three kind of alignments. We're calling them a red, red, blue, and green, or A1, B1, C1, with some minor sub-alternatives. And we use this as our, as our starting point for our technical evaluation. So if you want to go to the next slide. Essentially, what we did is, we broke the corridors down into various segments, so we kind of had a segment north of Highway seventy-five, kind of that middle segment between seventy-five and Highway twenty-three, and then the, what we're calling the kind of the south segment or segment three, really from Highway twenty-three to Highway fifteen. We looked at various criteria from a transportation perspective, whether that's traffic volume, how many people would use it, what your travel times are like, what's the safety, how many railroad impacts, what's your travel time reliability, things of that nature. We looked at property and land use impacts, both from an environmental justice perspective, existing neighborhoods or established neighborhoods, and as well as what it would look like serving future land use. We looked at all the different environmental factors, the biodiversity areas, wetlands, the granite outcrops, et cetera. Took a pretty detailed review of that. We looked at it from an economic perspective, both from a, from a construction cost, but also a business impact cost and what that could mean for the user. And then also from a multimodal perspective. This, this area is kind of a regional bicycle connection network area that, that's envisioned, and so what can be provided within that facility from a rider comfort, proximity to neighborhoods, how many people are going to use it, proximity to schools, et cetera. So we looked at a number of different criteria to kind of weigh out the technical evaluation from this. And so if you want to go to the next slide, what I'm going to do is going to give you a high-level overview of kind of each of the individual segments, looking at those main evaluation criteria. And so for the north segment, which is really focusing on Highway seventy-five to the north, really the A2, B2 alignment, which is the, the red and blue dashed alignment, it's the same alignment, really was seen as the most favorable option in this specific segment. Now, we're going to segment it up and then we'll, we'll break it down from there, but really what it comes down to is it's a much shorter segment. So it, it still has, each, each of these have, have business impacts to some extent, but it, but it's a much shorter segment. It connects in with an existing signal, so wouldn't create a new signal on, on Highway seventy-five. And so that's where the technical evaluation bore out that, that that segment was seen as most favorable in, in this north segment. Go to the next slide. In the middle segment, this one is, was, was a little bit where it didn't necessarily have one that was more favorable than the other. As you can see from the coloring a little bit, all the different categories, there wasn't one that's really kind of in that good category, that's all the way there. You know, they're, they're all kind of in that moderate to acceptable category. And so we didn't want to focus too much on this as we get to the, the south segment. What we were finding here was that, if you want to go to the next slide, please, thank you. Really here, there were a couple options that were, were more favorable, and it really was tied to what we were seeing as the most favorable options were the, the red dashed alignment on the southern end, and then the green alignment, which is A2 and C. Those two are actually more favorable just because of the proximity and how, how it tied opposite or just south of the Quarry Park. And then from there, it kind of splits between the red and the green alignments, which are the, the A1, B2. So you either go to kind of the, cross Highway twenty-three at the Belclaire Drive, or you cross Highway twenty-three at Thirty-Sixth Street. There's, so there's, what we're seeing is really is the north segment, there's a kind of a clear-cut winner, the south segment, there's a clear-cut winner, and then how do you connect the two is really where we're seeing a lot of the different options still from a technical evaluation perspective. So if you want to go to the next slide, please. So really what we came, came through here was, is we started to look at all the different kind of then combinations of, of alternatives. And what we found was, is that there were two alternatives that really kind of rose above the rest from a technical score perspective, and that was really the A2 alignment, which is the, the red dashed alignment. Or there was a hybrid option that came out of that, which was the, on the north segment was that A2, B2, that shortest segment to, which was more of the B1. I know this is, this is the solid blue, it's kind of the hybrid, so it gets you over to that Thirty-Sixth Street connection. So there were two options, really, that kind of, I think if you hit the button one more, there's the kind of one that kind of pulls in these top two. So really, what we're seeing is there's two main alignments from a technical score evaluation that were rising to the top. It's the red alignment here or the purple hybrid alignment. The, the red alignment really focuses on, on the Twentieth Street connection at County Road seventy-five, carries it straight south, new river crossing would be proposed at some point, and then crosses that, crosses Highway twenty-three at Belclaire Drive, and then connects in, obviously, at the same location on the southern end at Highway fifteen. The purple alignment takes a little bit more easterly, a more easterly river crossing alignment over and cuts, gets over to Thirty-Sixth Street where, where that crossing is through, near the Miller Industrial Park area there, and then comes down County Road one thirty-seven as well. Each have their pros and cons, and so what we did here next was actually we brought it to, which I'll, I'll kind of come back to in a minute, but then we, we will ask for feedback on this as well from the community on, on, on this. And we gave them a couple different options for that community survey, as well as that we had a online Wiki map where residents or for the public could actually note comments on there as well. So if you want to go to the next slide, I'll talk briefly a little bit about the cross-section that we were looking at. If you remember from previous discussions, you know, the forecasted volume here is probably in that thirteen, eleven to thirteen thousand cars a day range, and what that tells us, and that's a year twenty forty number, what that tells us really is we're probably looking at a three-lane type of facility or a two-lane with turn lanes. And then at some point, we'd want to preserve that ability to expand it to a, a four-lane or five-lane type of facility. And so what, what the policy would really kind of would, would focus in is on about a hundred and fifty foot of right-of-way swath that would be, want to be preserved over time. But really, the roadway initially would, would be much smaller from a footprint perspective, so it's going to be that lower cost to implement. And so we looked at three different cross-section types, more of that, that first option is really a two-lane undivided with ditches, more of that rural cross-section type of feel like a lot of the roadways that are county roads that are out there today. We looked at more of a hybrid option, which is the second one, which is a two-lane divided with ditches. So essentially, you still keep that rural cross-section on the outside, but what you do is you add that median in the middle to provide that little extra buffer of safety and help control access. And then that third option really would be a, a two-lane divided with, with curb and gutter, so more of that urban section. We looked at it from a, from various evaluations, from initial cost, costs or the ability to expand, you know, how easy is it to, to expand? What does it mean from a safety perspective and a multimodal perspective? All included at a minimum of a multi-use trail on one side. That's common feedback that we heard, is that, that there is, there is a desire for a multi-use trail. We are also showing an option with a sidewalk on one side as well, so that's going to be, that's really going to depend on context, on, on the need for that. But really, that, that hybrid section, that option two, really from a technical evaluation perspective, was really rising to the top from a cross-section. Now, that's something that would eventually get implemented over time because as, as you know, there's, on these, some of these alignments, there's existing roadways there, and so when that roadway comes up for reconstruction or things like that, that's where this new cross-section would be, look, look to be implemented. Only about twenty-three percent favored the, the purple alignment, and then about another quarter percent or twenty-seven percent really didn't have a, have a, have a preference. And so, that's what we've, we've heard from the, the feedback there. Some other things that we heard, if you go to the next slide, please. Once again, a lot of reiterating of the environmental impacts and those playing a key role. The purple line would be more impactful to, to property owners, the red alignment's a more direct route. There's concern over expenses and the construction cost to the taxpayer, and then there was, there's also been some discussion about a, a grade-separated crossing of Highway twenty-three and what that means, and that's something that we have thought about, and we've kind of, that was part of the evaluation criteria as well from a technical, is the feasibility of that long-term if and when, that were, were ever to be needed, which one, which of that crossings, the Belclaire Drive or the Thirty-Sixth Street could be more feasible from a, from a grade separation perspective. We also, once again, kind of, kind of brought back, the focus group again, shared this information as well. Once again, we've kind of heard, you know, that they want to just make sure that there's an open and transparent process kind of moving forward, and, and that they're continued to be engaged as decisions get made or as development comes through, or there's other capital improvement planning to, to identify funding. Once again, concerns about property values and, and any assessments were, were brought forward, and then, as we mentioned earlier, the, the right-of-way and the ability to donate land and, and what that process means and looks like. So, those are kind of the key feedback that we've heard thus far. As I mentioned, we're just kind of closing that, that second round of engagement now, and so, as we move towards the next steps, really what we're gonna be focusing on, if you go to the next slide, please, is really that, that adoption and preservation policy, policy. So, what that means is, that's where you get into the access spacing, what happens when you get a development proposal, things like that. And then, what we'll also be doing is looking at a, a, a funding strategy and how you implement this over time and what buckets are eligible. As you know, there's lots of different options that are out there, but it's also a very competitive, I don't know if I say competitive market, I don't know if that's the right, but it's, it's competitive, right? When you're looking at all the different funds, so you're competing against a, a number of things. So, what we're gonna do is put together a, a, a matrix that'll kind of outline those different funding options and how you could implement various segments over time or leverage public-private partnerships to really see this come to fruition. And so, with that, you know, there, our goal is to wrap up the study here by the end of the year, and so, I'd welcome any, any other feedback that you have in the study process, or if there's anything else you'd like to kind of make sure we get incorporated, you know, we welcome your, your feedback, so. I'll take some questions.
I'll go. What the pre-ization, to preserve the property, is that preserving any of the three alignments, basically? Or are you gonna narrow it down?
Well, the technical evaluation now, so the, the challenge is, is that, you know, this is a pre-environmental process, so we can't necessarily say we're gonna have a preferred alignment. So, there's a technical evaluation on these alignments. What, what the councils could do is say, we, we agree that this is the most favorable option, we'd like to set up, or we as a council agree that this is, makes the most sense for this red alignment or purple alignment, whichever one it is, and then you can work towards that, preserving that as opportunities come forward, so that a developer wouldn't come in and says, well, I want, I'm gonna build this. Well, we have this policy that says, this is the corridor, we want to preserve this, so let's have a discussion through your conditional use process, or whatever process that, that development would be going through to obtain that necessarily right-of-way for the future corridor.
Yeah, we're in the process of a comprehensive plan, so this would, this would be a good timeframe for us as a city to decide which way we're gonna go to protect that, if, if, if we're gonna protect it at all, so, yeah. Yep. I mean, we've had them protected, I think we had seven of them protected at one time. What are we down to, about three now or four or something?
Right. And, and the challenge is, is, you know, when you're looking at an environmental process, it might be, you know, if you were doing one big project, you know, there's a, certainly a defined environmental process, where this might be small incremental pieces, and the environmental processes might be a lot different. I mean, if a developer comes in, it's kind of, okay, they have their environmental assessment, but it's, okay, we know we've got the corridor there, so it's, it's a little bit different. And so, that's where these types of projects, where it's important to get the, the, the local officials all on, on the same page, to really, you know, work in tandem with everything else that, that might come up.
Yeah, in this case, Wake Park and St. Joe's, I'd almost have to agree that this is where it's gonna cross the river, because if it's two blocks apart, it's not gonna cross very good.
Correct, and, and my, my associate is at, St. Joe's tonight at the exact same time, so, having a similar conversation this evening.
Good.
Because I thought when we were planning this, that, you know, we are really, the sky's the limit. I mean, if we're gonna plan this, we want to plan it the best way, and I don't like green at all. I envision that road being out, nor using a lot of our, our existing roadways. I want to add new roadways.
I think you kind of narrowed it down to the red and the purple ones, I think.
Correct, yeah, there's two different sides. From a technical score, right, it kind of gets to the, the red or the, the purple, right, or on the other side of your map, but I'm...
I'd agree with you that.
I don't want, I don't want that there.
Yeah, I'd agree, that's not the best.
No.
I would also add, and I've always been a big advocate, is, I'm gonna say when this happens, who knows when that is, that'd be a great disservice if we cross twenty-three at a grade intersection. It needs to be a...
Elevated.
Separated grade interchange. It has to be, otherwise, this road means nothing, you're gonna have so many accidents. So, just plan on it, that would be my, my suggestion. It's gonna be expensive, but it's the right thing to do.
Yeah, but that's the time to do it, and it's, it'd be easy enough to do, not money-wise, but it's easy enough to do in that area when there's nothing there or not much there.
Correct, correct. You know, the question would be, is on the preservation policy side of things, you know, the, the footprint of an interchange is pretty large, and so, that's a discussion that needs to be made, right, is, you know, as, you know, on the Highway twenty-three corridor, right, you get more development pressure, right, higher volumes, and so, you know, those are, those are decisions that need to be made and discussed, and...
Maybe it'll be a roundabout, huh? Yeah, yeah. All right, council, any other questions for? All right.
Sounds good.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the time.
Yep, let us know when, what's going on, so. All right, I don't have anything. Anybody got anything else? John? How's our grading doing on the parking lot?
What's that?
How's our grading doing on the parking lot at the amphitheater?
Oh, for bringing in the gravel. They, they should start hauling any day now. You know, we had a pre-con probably three weeks ago, and they targeted late October, early November, which is right about now, so I haven't, I haven't seen any movement, but I think it's, it's coming.
Okay.
We've got the little bit of utility work done and kind of the curb radiuses poured, and now it's start to just start hauling in gravel.
So, with that, them piles are gonna stay as they were pushed to the south, correct?
Right now, they've just stripped all the topsoil.
Right, that's what I'm talking about.
Yep.
And that's pushed approximately within the property line or close to it?
Not yet.
And that's not, they'll have to move those, because our, our gravel parking lot goes up pretty close to our south property line there, so that's just kind of a temporary placement as they're working the project.
So, they, they do plan to haul that out?
I think we've talked to the contractor about hauling it and burming it on-site for potential future use of the project.
Okay.
So, we're gonna find a spot.
I was just trying to imagine in my mind if that was getting close to the property line, or is there more property beyond it?
There's more back there. And there's a, there's a fence back there. It's kind of covered up by all the trees and brush and stuff that, you know, you can see the property line there.
Yep, okay.
Bill?
Nope.
Steve?
Stop over for some cake if you have a few minutes after we're done.
All right, Carla? Paul?
I got you.
All right, Shawna, you got anything?
No.
All right, we are adjourned at seven oh nine.